Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four planning board meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had a request made to move up one of the matters, the Confident Kids Club, to the front, just because the architect has double-booked himself. First, we're just going to go through correspondence. Anybody have anything they want to discuss there?
None.
Counselor?
Mr. Chair.
John?
No, not me.
Anybody from the board?
No.
Okay, we will move on to the meeting minutes. These are the draft minutes of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments, additions, alterations?
None.
Counselor?
Nope.
Admiral? John?
That's you. No, no. Sorry.
You've been promoted.
I move the minutes.
We have a second.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
All right, then, we're going to move up first, which is number five. We'll make it number one, the Confident Kids Club. This is a discussion of site plan locations, three-five-three-five Crom Pound Road. Good morning, or good afternoon.
The sun's still out, so a pretty morning.
Yeah, beautiful day.
First of all, thank you very much. I did just got an word that I have an emergency meeting at my temple, but thank you very much. Just to bring you up to date, since we have been here last time, we went back to the zoning board to have our public hearing, and the zoning board approved the special apartment unanimously, and we're back before the planning board to, I assume, to switch the previously approved site plan to this one, was my understanding, and we've filled out the application, the short EAF, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anything further?
John?
So you do, for the reference enclosures, you're doing chain-linked fence with green slats?
Yes, that's correct.
And each one will have a gate?
Yes. Gate number one, gate number two, gate number three.
I'm sorry?
I said gate number one, gate number two, and gate number...
I think you've been through it, so I don't know that there's too much more to talk about. It's really getting this plan in the record so you can see that it goes according to plan, basically.
All right, so what's next up?
Well, we can drift through...
I do a quick question. Oops, sorry. So the outgoing recreation area is kind of set aside, if you will, or on the plan. There were a number of issues, and this may not really be the applicant's responsibility, but there were a number of things we saw at the site that required some attention potentially. Are those things still...
They were going to clean everything up.
Okay.
Yes, that's part of the project. I think the board had asked if we could be in contact with the owner of the property, and Mr. Berlow did contact him, and the answer is yes. The whole back will be cleaned up, everything will be striped, and as John just mentioned, we're going to have three dumpster areas all fenced in with chain-linked fence and slats, green slats.
Great.
Unless you want another color.
Green's good. I like green.
So are you going to do the ramp now, or...
No, we'll do that if and when we have to.
Only if you need to take the recreation right? You're going to do the new reference enclosures immediately as part of the project?
Oh, yes, that's part of this project, of course.
Everything else will be future if needed, right?
Correct.
Okay. Have you resolved how the Chinese food place is getting out in an emergency? Are they still coming through your space, or do they get to have their own way out?
Whatever the, I assume that'll be resolved by the building inspector, whichever is the most expeditious way to, God forbid, if there's an emergency, absolutely, yes. And I think actually, to answer your question, if you looked at the floor plan, the hallway, our hallway in the back, which leads to the restrooms, also, I think the end of the wall is the Chinese restaurant, so if the building inspector wants us to do an emergency door there, we can do that.
Okay. So, given, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just finished a thought. I just, I'm going to straighten a question that follows everything.
Okay. Mine's similar, is that all these are pretty minor, so I don't know if you feel it necessary to hold a public hearing on them.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So we would do a resolution for you for next time, and if you're ready to do it, you can adopt it.
Yeah.
This'll become a signed site plan representing these amendments in the record.
That sounds like the way to go. I mean, it's basically to clean up the outside, for the most part.
My question was, you've been to the zoning board a couple of times, and there was a memo written on the middle of March. Does that need to be updated for the current items that are now...
No, actually, the plan that you have is the same plan that we went to the zoning board at the second meeting, so they saw the same plan that you're...
Because the memo that I was looking at is dated the fifteenth of March, and it makes reference to, like, eight items, and I think there are more than eight items shown on the plan. That's why I was wondering, are they aware of...
Yes, the plan that you have is the same plan the zoning board saw at our second meeting, at our public hearing.
Okay, so you're not missing something that's referenced, that's what I'm...
Yeah, no, no.
Covering that base.
Yes, this plan covers everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good day.
You, too. Okay, we'll go back to number one, which is Tully Sandwas, also known as Sandwas subdivision. This is a request for a one-year time extension. Oh, my God, I gave it wrong.
Before you go, I have to recuse myself from this matter.
Okay.
So I'll just step out for a moment.
How are you?
Hi. So we're here to request a one-year time extension, but really, the application's actually at the finish line here. There's just a couple of things that are, and I think you might have a map to sign tonight, but one of them was to finalize and formalize the conservation easement, get it ready for filing, and as far as I know, the only other thing is the setting of the bond amount by the town engineer. And otherwise, I think we're, we've got everything ready to go, but it expires on the twenty-four, so we want to make sure that that's in place.
Okay. Dan, any issues? John?
No.
Counselor?
Ready to, with the documents to get it signed, once we get, you know, the actual pieces that will be bearing your signature.
Okay, then, do we have a motion for the request for a one-year time extension for the Sandwas subdivision?
Motion.
Second. All's in favor.
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Okay, thanks. Okay, good night.
Okay. Ms. Aaron, yes, we have to go, do I have a motion to move into the work session portion of the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
First up, we have the Lowe's Home Center. This is a special use permit for outdoor service, location thirty-two hundred Crom Pound. This is for the renewal of a temporary and permanent outdoor storage and display and special permits. How are you?
Good evening, members of the board. Kevin Bulger from Patrol Architects, representing Lowe's Home Centers. Where's the best place to put this ward?
I'm not going to see it.
All right, we have the plan, so it's probably best if you spin it towards them, or towards the camera. Better?
Mr. Chairman mentioned, we're here tonight for the renewal of an outdoor storage permit. Matter of history, our firm was the architect of record for the original store approval, and I was the project manager as well for that, so I do have some history and some knowledge of this project. My understanding is that, a number of months ago, they did come before the board, they needed some additional help, clarifications on the site plan, our firm was re-engaged, and then we put together a site plan for your viewing tonight. That site plan was also the result of a site meeting with planning staff back on February sixth, where we went over all the different storage needs, and my understanding is that the plan has been prepared in compliance with our discussions that night. So I'll just go over right now the site plan with you. This site plan does two things. It combines the amount of outdoor storage that was originally approved, as well as shows the new storage areas or the relocated storage areas as being requested and discussed. First and foremost, it was determined that the majority of the outdoor storage areas, storage needs, would be placed in the rear of the site here. So that area shaded in blue is where the majority of the storage materials will go. That area typically is not occupied, the parking spaces are typically not occupied, so that was an ideal location to put it there. That area does take up forty spaces just in the rear. That does free up the parking spaces along the side of the garden center to remain for open and parking. This area along here was originally part of the approval, and that remains. That's for some outdoor storage, but primarily utility trailer displays, if you've been out there. Utility trailers that contractors will buy, they're on display over here. There is front, areas of storage along the front of the store, that's primarily still in place for the original approval. Majority of the expansion now has been purring out in front of the garden center, and we have clear areas for all exits, for exit purposes, and we stayed clear of fire department connections and all safety concerns, and that was reviewed when we were out there as well. The plan also identifies different items in the parking lots, such as the pro-trailer parking spaces located here, some larger spaces for the pro customer, and as well as designated spaces for veterans, they get preferred parking locations, and there's six customer pickup spaces here. We've also identified two areas where we have mobile security cameras, and there's a picture of a typical mobile security camera on the plan. One of his locations right here, another location is right there. In response to planning staff, Lowe's and Lowe's security team has provided a letter indicating why that's required and why they have that, and why that's common practice for Lowe's operations. I also wanted to mention that Assistant Store Manager Sean Naly is here tonight. He's right there to answer any questions. In total, we can go through the parking key. We now have two hundred and forty-three Lowe's designated parking spaces just for Lowe's available. There is seventy-eight parking spaces that are shared under an agreement with the overall center. These spaces are in front here, so a common area between the out parcels and Lowe's, and one of the primary reasons for preparing the site plan was to accurately show how these out parcels have been, that'll be constructed. The original plan, I believe, showed the original approvals for the out parcels, and they have since been approved in a different configuration and size and so forth. Now this plan is basically accurate as far as existing conditions go. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, be happy to ask, and as mentioned, our store managers here are just to answer questions as well.
I got a few. First, there were some issues with compliance with the original site plan. Were those issues all addressed?
Yes.
So we're cleaned up now. If I could, the security units you got, is there any way that could be done more permanent? Oh, I'm sorry, you got...
I...
I'm glad you got it. You got to come up to the mic, I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom.
They're intended to be mobile cameras. I would have to bubble up to corporate to see if it's a...
Okay.
So, one of the few times I can answer that question, if you're consulting. That question came up on another project we're working on, and what we did is we proposed PVC vinyl fencing four feet high all the way around the base, so it just made it look a little bit more permanent.
I don't think there's an issue with the way it looks, or the acting of it. It's just a spot. I go to your place at least once a week. That's fantastic. And I do see, you know, when you're there on the weekend, anybody that's going to Trader Joe's, a lot of them do come over to your lot. So parking it is prime out there. You can always get a spot, but it's prime. That spot is in the middle, and the only reason I ask the question is if you were able to put that on a more permanent basis somewhere, it would free up more, obviously, parking.
So when you say permanent, it's not any parking space?
Yeah.
Or like on a light pole? Affixed to a light pole? Or several?
That one has not been resolved, or Lowe's has been able to commit to that yet, but it has been asked before. Is there any we're open to putting them in locations like you mentioned? If, I don't know if there's anything to stand out to me right now, but we, you know, let's take a look at it, and certainly, but it's better to have them there than not have them there, so...
Why do you need them to be mobile?
Yeah.
I'm not sure why you need them to be mobile. Why, did you move them around? Because I didn't see them ever moved around.
No.
Do you see them? Well, simply they're called mobile because that's the official name, because they're on wheels. So basically, once they get located, they're pretty much permanent, even though they're on...
Could they be co-located with the cart corrals?
They're basically take up an entire parking space.
Right. So I'm saying, since they're elevated, they could be above the cart corral, and that way you could combine the two into one spot.
If you take a look at the plan, the unit itself is pretty involved, it's not just a camera.
Right.
There's a base to it and so forth and whatever, so it's kind of, I don't want to say bulky, but there's a lot of substance to it, so it's not just a camera that you're sticking on top of the pole or putting somewhere.
But what, so what else is on that part? I'm not sure, I don't remember off the top. What else, other than the camera, what are the purposes that serve this? Lights on?
Do you have the site, do you have the solar panel?
This looks like battery.
Well, I understand it's a solar panel and all of that, I get that, but is there a purpose for lighting that is associated with it? Because it seems to me that you could accomplish the same thing by putting a pole on the roof with a long-range hammer.
So there's no doubt it could be done. This is just the manner in which Lowe's does it, because they work with a national security company, so these units are basically purchased or leased or rented through that company, and they're the ones that operate them, and they're, you know, make them secure and they guarantee and so forth, whatever. So they currently don't have another means of doing it that I'm aware of, other than this means. I wish they did, because it would make my job a lot easier.
The cameras are taking up parking space, but you have adequate parking all over the place, right?
We believe we have more than adequate.
So why wouldn't that be a problem? The cameras are taking a spot.
Parking is prime out there.
But they have enough.
But they have enough. That's the right point.
Is it compliant without the spot? Without the spots?
Well, no, of course not.
Wait, so they do not have enough?
In other words, with that as a permanent fixture, which, although it's on wheels, it's permanent, renders the site plan non-compliant in terms of providing the off-site parking requirement at four spaces per thousand.
And you're taking...
Let me just be accurate. It's less than that on this site, because during the review process, we went through a whole parking, you know, review. So anyway, but it's less than what was originally provided and what is supposed to be provided under the approval by the two spaces or whatever is taking up. You also, you know, the storage also has been taken up with product for storage, but that waxes and wanes with the season, right? So our thought was, since there was storage along the side, it seemed more appropriate that they would be more readily used and move the storage to the back, where there was already some storage there and there was less parking happening there, so the demand that you have determined was required for this site is not being used to capacity since the place has been open, basically, in essence.
I mean, Lowe's would certainly be willing to move them further away from the stores so that there's a couple more spaces more available to the customers closer to the store.
Yeah, I think, like, my, if we have an issue with a number of parking spots, then it certainly could be an issue. The fact that they are more visible than less visible is better in my mind, that a lot of the crime that's taking place is taking place in parking lots. So having them there, I'd rather have them out in the open, right in everybody's face, making the noise they make and taking up the space they take, as long as the parking is sufficient.
The parking appears to be sufficient on a day-to-day basis, from what we observed, and apparently from what Rich and yourself have observed.
I think that it kind of has an appearance of an afterthought, rather than a design intended...
Well, correct, it was not part of the original approval.
Right.
And this is part of a national rollout by Lowe's. I'm aware, you know, whatever projects I'm working on, and it's probably two dozen, you know, they all have them, so it is part of their, like I said, their national rollout, they're part of their standard operations now.
I see it as a deterrent. You got a camera sticking up in the air that says it's a deterrent. You're not going to have a guy come up with a pickup and start loading, sheetrocking, run off, because he knows he's caught.
Correct.
You might get a guy stealing a box of nails inside, but as far as something big, that camera's a deterrent. I look at it all the time and say, wish I had one of those in my shop.
So, well, actually, I was there today, and somebody was trying to return something that they didn't buy from Lowe's, claiming it was from Lowe's, and the camera picked it up, and they were able to show him that what he was saying was inaccurate.
How'd the camera pick that up?
They were able to go back, and they were able to, you know, identify who he was, and that, you know, the box, I should say, the box that he was walking out with was different than the box he was coming back in.
But a camera on the roof would have accomplished the same thing?
For the most part, yes, but again, they don't have that set up yet. I wish they did, they don't. When you have them in the parking lot, you do get sort of the three-sixty. You do have them roof-mounted, there are a lot of blind spots, there are. Believe it or not, they're not as visible. They do get lost up in, you know, up in the parapets or up on top of the roof.
This is your wheel, isn't it?
So we do believe this is the most effective way.
What's your opinion? How much of a variation are you seeking here?
Absolutely. With respect to what's required versus what you are looking to have approved today? We have, I would have to defer to planning staff on that. They did ask us to put together a summary of the available number of parking spaces now, which is three-twenty-one, and I believe, I believe the requirement's three-seventy-five?
Yeah, where you're losing parking is in the back for the storage.
So three-seventy-five is what would be needed?
That was the requirement.
Right. And they're providing three-fifty-five?
Three-twenty-one.
Three-seventy-five, less than forty for the back, and then, I guess, the couple for the...
Correct.
So how do we address that?
Well, I think those are still available on this site if there is, becomes a difference in the demand for the parking. In other words, if there's a parking issue that happens, you can say, okay, you have a site here that's not functioning to a level of safety that this plan was designed to, you now have to remove that storage.
We could do that in the future, if this happens, if it happens?
Yeah.
Sure, we would absolutely agree to that.
And you can put that in the resolution.
Okay. Are we all right with that?
Good. While we're on that topic, I think you were noted in one of the earlier meetings that you were at, and I had brought up the point of having an identification either by sign or some manner, so that we would know where the exterior storage is, the limit of it is, so that somebody who's operating a forklift or whatever is putting things there is just not putting them randomly, because we wouldn't expect them to be supervised all the time, and somebody's out there with a plan, somebody's got to be able to identify the limit of that in the field, and for us to take a look and see if it's being complied with. So there should be some way to identify either a bollard with a number on it or something.
There is a standard way that I do in my apologies, that it wasn't more clear on the plan, is that all the storage areas you see boxed out, that they'll get a very thick four-foot-wide, usually yellow line, so yellow stands out separate from the white, and that yellow line will box out and be very specific about the storage, so if that storage goes beyond the yellow line, that's bad.
Just some way to identify it in the field.
In the plan.
Yeah, that, I don't know if it needs to be on the drawing, because we're going to make reference to it, or we can simply add to it in whatever our approval is.
You have it as a note on the plan? Or how do you have it on the plan? You don't have it on the...
No, but in the compliance plan, I can put it on there.
Right, so...
I look for it on the plan, I can see it.
So we'll require that in the resolution, and then he'll give us a subsequent plan...
Correct. I'll have that to you next day.
And this is like a trade-off, right? You're taking the parking space, you're reclaiming the parking spaces along the side, and you're just moving the location. Is it the same amount? It's like, is it an even trade-off? You're getting, you're reclaiming forty spaces on the side, and you're taking forty spaces from the back? Is it kind of like...
Generally speaking, I would agree with that.
Yeah, because, I mean, the site is functioning, I mean, as far as I can tell.
If it's experiencing bleed out onto the street, and that's what you've got to worry about.
Yeah.
All right, any other issues?
No issues.
Concerns? Counselor? John?
Back to the security department, one second. Is there typically an agreement with the local police department that allows them access to that video feed or that...
There is.
And you have that with your account listed for it?
No, I don't, not a lot of feed. If they have access, they can come anytime, and if they have, there was an issue not too long ago, where they have access to those cameras.
Great, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, do you have the ability to not grant the police that access?
Not me personally, we don't not grant the police.
No, I'm not suggesting that you do. I'm asking for other locations. I mean, I know that you do, and I know that those cameras are there, and my question's really aimed at other locations in town, because it's a good idea, but do you have the option to option out of showing the police that footage?
We're told as management of the company to defer to our asset protection, so they're the ones that can access all of that. The most recent one, where we had a detective come in and ask for information, I think the LP loss prevention person was there and accessed the cameras immediately. I don't think Lowe's, as a rule, would tell the police they don't have access to them.
They won't do it as a rule, but they will agree to it if requested.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, and again, very clean, well-run store, really nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good job. All right, so do I have a motion for approving the resolution, re-improving special use permit for outdoor services and storage for the Lowe's Home Center?
With some of the modifications that was spoken about.
With the modifications as noted. Thank you, John.
Second.
All's in favor. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much for your time. We'll get that revised plan to you immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those things, those things, those things, okay. This is Yorktown Green Shopping Center. This is a discussion of site plan, location three-five-five Downing Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Matthew Dudley. I'm attorney with the law firm of Harris Beach. We're counsel for the applicant, Oster Yorktown Properties LLC. We're here again tonight for a work session for their application for site plan approval, some small changes that they would like to do to the property at three-fifty-five Downing Drive, including a trash compactor, trash enclosure, a covered loading dock, and with me here tonight is Mr. John Kubida from Jarmel Kiesel Architects and Engineers, and Mr. Eden Congoli is in the audience tonight from Oster Properties. So unless you have any questions for me, as the attorney, I'm going to hand it over Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is TJ Maxx, this is Yorktown Green Shopping Center. This is a discussion of site plan, location 355 Downing Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Matthew Dudley, I'm attorney with the law firm of Harris Beach. We're counsel for the applicant, Oster Yorktown Properties LLC. We're here again tonight for a work session for their application for site plan approval. Some small changes that they would like to do to the property at 355 Downing Drive, including a trash compactor, trash enclosure, a covered loading dock. And with me here tonight is Mr. John Kubida from Jarmel Kiesel Architects and Engineers. And Mr. Eden Congoli is in the audience tonight from Oster Properties. So unless you have any questions for me as the attorney, I'm going to hand it over to John to explain what's been adjusted since last meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, how are you doing?
How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good.
I got a new eyeglass prescription, so having issues like, do I wear them tonight? Do I not wear them tonight? So if I squint over here, yeah. Okay, so the biggest changes that we spoke about, I'll go over the architecturals and then I'll go through the civil. So architecturally, we spoke about the, the entire building. If we're going to fix the front of the building and update and modernize the front of the building and make it beautiful, why don't we go ahead and update the rest of the building? So we noted on our plans that the rest of the building will be painted. And in doing so, we're going to modernize the rear of the building. We're going to also, what was also talked about was the rooftop equipment. So we're going to provide screening on the, the rooftop equipment. So we do have a mechanical, mechanical louver screening, it's a horizontal louver type. We provided a detail on the drawings.
Around each unit?
And those will be around each unit, yes, yes. So we did make that note. And additionally, any of the existing or any new conduit that's going to be going up the sides of the building, we're also going to be cleaning that and painting that, just so, you know, it's not just the walls, it's just not the coping, like, we're pretty much going to give the whole building a face look, so we're not just going to pick and choose the, the facades. So that was the, the biggest changes to the drawings. We also have a material board that we started flushing out, so... Some of the... Thank you. So, and actually, behind you? I'm going to have to pay you over here. So this is going to be on the bottom, let's call it about two and a half feet of the building, the base of the building, this will be the, the stone that we're selecting. So some of the colors on here are, you know, I would say, use the word complementing the Uncle Giuseppe's, which is one of the buildings around the site. So we are kind of trying to match that in our architectural vernacular and, you know, also given the building somewhat of a different, a newer updated feel. So these are some of the materials that we're thinking of. So we have the stone base and, and then above the stone, we have over here the limestone, which is on the darker side, which is again, starting to complement the Uncle Giuseppe's building. And the other two, which we have the stucco, which is two versions of a white. This dark color here is going to be the canopies that extend off the building. So pretty much above all the main entrances into each tenant's door, we're going to have a canopy that extends out, so we're going to have that in this darker color.
What's that material?
Uh, it's a, it's a metal. So it's like a bronze color. It's like a brake metal, like a rhinar. And then we also have, and here is going to be the grout. I don't know if you could see that. So we have some of those colors selected and this is the TJ Maxx color that they require as part of their brand standards. We haven't, we didn't find the exact color sample for the five below, which is the blue that everyone knows and loves, but we could provide that sample as well. So those were the biggest items that we talked about architecturally. Any questions on that or thoughts?
You know, we have a color named Yorktown Green and we require that used everywhere. I don't know how TJ Maxx will feel about that.
Jackets also.
Okay. If you can't see me, I'm smiling.
I don't know what it is, this room, we got a bunch of comedians here. We should have a meeting here every time. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any concerns about the architect?
Yeah, I just was wondering how you're addressing the back of the building. We, we chatted about it at the last meeting.
Yes.
And you haven't commented on that yet, so...
So the back of the building, we're going to paint that and that's going to be the, that white color, the white stucco, so it's going to match. So the, the stucco that we're going to have on the main, between the columns, so that upper portion about above the stone, so whatever that, I shouldn't say whatever, that, the... China white color, so it's going to be a whiter, brighter color and we're just going to take that color and wrap it around all four sides.
But are you extending the parapet wall that we talked about or...
At this time, no, we're not going to extend that, that parapet. We opted to do the mechanical screening to hide the units.
So it's going to be screened around the rooftop mechanicals, but not at the parapet wall?
Not at, so the parapet will be the front portion, so that will have the parapet and that will hide the mechanicals from that part.
From 118 in the back though, that screening is going to be just local to the individual pieces, not, not the, not the parapet wall?
Correct. And we looked at that and if we were to extend that parapet, I mean, we're talking a parapet that would have to be upwards of eight feet in order to actually screen all those mechanical equipment. And to, to build a parapet of that height, we'd have to, you know, start introducing diagonal bracing for, for wind loading and it's...
Well, how high is the screening for the, the mechanicals?
So that's about, we're showing at seven feet around each unit. So when it's localized around each unit, it's easier to construct and it's easier to deal with each individual conditions from a structural standpoint. But, you know, going around the rest of the building becomes an engineering challenge.
What, in regards to the parapet, what material were you looking at that you're speaking of right now?
The, to raise the parapet?
Yeah.
A gauge metal. Pretty much stud framing.
So, so you need framing and so on and so forth?
You're talking about metal framing, lightweight?
Yeah, lightweight gauge metal framing, yes.
And the material that's going to screen the equipment is the same thing?
Uh, it's louvered, so it would, yes, it would be a metal in terms of construction, but it would have horizontal blades that would allow for airflow.
Right.
So yes, it would be metal, similar to like gauge metal.
Are they going to be covered?
You know, from, from an engineering standpoint, you know, it's, it gets involved because then we have to now start reinforcing the existing roof, the framing, the joists, the open web joists. So we, we were trying to, yeah, think about it in, in terms of, you know...
Well, did you consider using a type of panel as you've selected for around the units? Something that would be, you know, compatible with color and so forth of the building and use that, similar to like a fence, right?
Yeah.
Just like these are fences around each unit.
Correct.
So in my mind, I'm thinking, I'm going to see a collection of boxes that, okay, so it's not, it's not galvanized metal any longer or, or painted aluminum or sheet steel units, but now it's these collection of things that are all around it, make no rhyme or reason, that I don't think is going to be that much of an improvement. But a long panel along the back of the building, which is simple to construct such as a fence, but has some nice treatment to it and you can do a complimentary color, may do the trick.
Yeah, and also...
Alongside the back roof?
We're saying, we're saying a parapet wall, it doesn't have to be just a straight wall, it has to be braced. And you talked about engineering this, I think we need an architect to do this or maybe you just simply step it back in places that'll give it the strength that it needs. And you could do it out of the same material, it's going to be the screening for the, for the mechanical equipment, be the parapet wall equipment, uh, parapet wall screen. And I, I'm guessing that by the time you take into account all of the mechanical pieces that are up there, all of the tenants, it's going to equal what you would put into place for the parapet wall in terms of volume. That's just my, my guess, having done this before, so...
Sure.
I think, I think you're going to already be there. So I don't think there's a cost differential and I think it's going to give us a unified design across the back of that building that I'm trying to encourage you to do because otherwise I'm not really encouraged to put signage on the back of the building. If it's, if it's going to be something that our eyes are going to be attracted to and then you're not going to have it worthy of being looked at, then let's not look at it.
Okay. I would say whether we put the signage in the back or not, we're still going to paint the, the exterior of the building. So all the sides are going to paint. I guess it just depends if that sign's going to go in the back or not. So let me, I'll...
I'm trying to encourage you to, to improve the back of the building because it's on Route 118 and you're going to see it somehow, some way, no matter how much screening there is or isn't, or if we invite somebody who's viewing it or not. My feeling is let's have something better to look at than what's there now. And I don't think that, I don't think it's a lot to, to ask for, given the fact that you're already screening the stuff that's up on the roof.
It's a fair point, it's a fair point.
Kind of what I'm nudging you.
I'll take your, your advice under advisement right now, I won't commit either way.
I have, we have a memo from our Vaca.
Yes.
That was day-to-day themselves. Your plan said, I think, three days that, did you incorporate any of their recommendations into your plan set now? They had issues about the monument sign, tree planting and things of that sort.
So the tree planting, so we have now updated our plans since that meeting.
Oh, you're going to? Would you accept, basically, I want to know, are you going to incorporate any of those recommendations going forward?
So the material board, we started to address, so that we, we are going to work with you on that. The, the signage, because there was some notes about their submit some specifications and, and there was some language about how you would like to see the letters on that sign and things of that nature. So that's going to get incorporated into the signage package that's ultimately going to be submitted by the tenants. So we will, we will work with you on that. The landscaping... So the, the plantings, so I, I know that this topic keeps coming up, but as of, as proposed, the plans, we are proposing seven, I believe the, the golden maple trees, we're proposing the six of those trees along the front. And we didn't want to increase the impervious area of the site, so we were keeping the existing cutouts and we were trying to work within that parameter at this time.
Keeping them up?
So the impervious, we didn't want to increase the impervious, so we figured let's, whatever, the, the size of the existing cutouts, that we were, we were going to reuse those for, for the landscaping. So that was the strategy at this time. So we have, we have them placed along the front. So that's the strategy at this point, is to, to maintain those locations.
I, I, have you looked at expanding the, those?
Those planting wells? Lengthless.
So in other words, it, it gives the tree a little bit more water, ability for its roots to spread, it may be healthier, may, may prevent what happened the last time. You also get to plant some other things in that and it might be the right thing to do and certainly reducing your impervious. You are in, you know, the water should, keep that in mind.
Practically here. Yeah, we do have a comment from a resident who pointed out the history of this site, flooding that used to occur, but fortunately, due to the efforts of some of the boards a few years back, some of the drainage efforts were corrected. Strange problem with way down there.
Fair enough.
Is there any, any change to the landscaping along the back, along the 118?
So we, so the, the landscaping that, when we looked at the site plan, our existing concrete curb comes very close to that property line.
Right.
So anything beyond that property line, unfortunately, is not part of our property, so I didn't, we haven't made any changes at this time beyond that. So we were just kind of maintaining what we have currently.
Is there any, any area there for planting or are you saying that you're on the property line? I, I know it's minimal if it exists at all.
There would be a few, a few areas that, kind of where the loading dock area is, there's probably an opportunity to plant a few trees if desired, but a good section of it, I would say, two-thirds of it is, our curb is pretty much on the property line or a few feet from it. So, you know, it just becomes who owns one and we don't want to...
Just a continuation of what I was talking about before and since our last meeting when you attended, I think the other board members that I know, I went by there and I, and I drove around the back of the building and I looked at it. And, and I think if it were nothing more than, I'll call it a hedge, vegetation along that property line would shield a lot of the concerns I have about looking at loading and the loading docks and trucks and so forth. And it need not be that high, therefore it would be, it would give you exposure to signage higher up on the building. So it would accomplish both things. It would, it would shield some of the unpleasant activities that we don't want to draw your eye to, but still give you the opportunity to put signage on the back of the building. And I think it would clean up the whole, the whole look without putting any kind of special planting. I'm calling it a hedge.
It's a chain of fence there that's covered with weeds and invasive.
Yeah.
Partially, I'm looking at it now and it's partially doing exactly what you said.
Right.
Question would be, is the, who maintains that side? Is it the town or is that the...
The town.
That, that run could definitely use some upgrade.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be anything, I'm, I'm saying a hedge because it doesn't need to get maintained much. Right now, it doesn't get maintained at all, so it looks like, it's kind of doing what we're hoping to accomplish, but it's, it's overgrown and it looks that way. And I think whether the fence stays there or not, if there was hedged vegetation there, it could get trimmed once a year or whatever, it probably looks a lot better than what we have now.
John, if I may, is this the property line versus the curb cut there? To me, it doesn't look like there's enough room for a hedge, but I could be wrong, it just, it looks like very normal.
I mean, I don't think it needs to be more than perhaps two feet, you know, maybe the most. And if it overhangs the property lines, I'm sure the weeds are going there now anyhow, so...
Okay, I mean, fair point.
Take, take a look at it.
Well, we'll take another look. I, I know there was concerns about, you know, once you start planting in there, then the roots start to spread and once the roots spread past the property lines and, we don't want to plant it too close to the curbs, I, I know there's a delicate balance that, you know, we'll look at it one more time. It's a fair point.
And if, if, if that dimension changes at different places on your site, then maybe you do that where there's enough dimension in other places. You have, I don't know, chain link fence with slats or something. You, you know, I think you get my point.
Yeah, I, I get, I get your point. Would that, that topic still be concerned if that sign was removed completely from the back of the building?
Well, I mean, I'm not looking to get you to remove the sign, that's not my intention. My intention is...
I, I said that, I phrased that incorrectly.
Yeah.
I phrased that incorrectly because that, that sign will be by the, the tenant, so it'll be under a separate sign.
Well, I understand, but, but if you were to come back to this board for other signage in the future, that I think this board would be more in favor of looking at that than, than if you don't make these improvements, I would say, I don't want you to, I don't want to see people's eye attracted to the back of a building that looks unsightly. That's really, that's the bottom line.
Fair point.
So it's going to, if we're going to attract our, our eyes to that building with a sign, be it TJ Maxx or anybody, then let's, let's look at something that's worth looking at and if it's not, then let's not look at it.
Fair point and I, I misspoke when I phrased the question. I, I think a cohesive sign strategy, whether it's done on this site plan or not, a separate signature package, I think now's the time to, to create that, that strategy.
My personal feeling is that signage on the back of the building will diminish the thought that that's the back of the building. And I think that would be helpful for the overall site. Speaking of signage, does anyone have questions regarding the pylon sign that we've included in our plans?
So I got a few comments here from the group. First one is Syll, so it talks about providing a truck radius, a truck turning radius in the rear lot. Given the proposal of the new monument sign, will the Burger King, and will the Burger King sign and Yorktown Green sign on Route 118 and Keer Street be removed? Trees don't appear to be located in each one of the empty tree wells. And is there any way to add a bike rack to the area?
Oh, and someone else mentioned benches along the sidewalk.
I think the bike rack is an easy one to add. I don't see an issue with that. And regarding the vehicle analysis, we have provided that.
I saw one.
So we took the, the vehicle, which is the largest, and we use that as, you know, the basis of the design. So we have, um, the truck entering the site, and then we have a truck exiting the site.
So the, the top plan is Page V100.
Thank you. On Page V100 is a vehicle analysis drawing. So we sized this for a truck with the designation WB67. And that gives you 53 plus 15, is that 68? So that's the 68 feet in the length of the vehicle. So we wanted to make sure, and even TJ Maxx, who's the, the, the anchor tenant, they wanted to, we needed to prove to them that these trucks can get safely through the site. Okay, so what we're proposing is we'll have the TJ Maxx deliver the goods for the store either on off hours, so either early in the morning or late at night, when the parking demand is at the lowest. So we'll have, um, trucks enter off where the Burger King side of the site is, and then they'll come in. And as we get towards the rear of the building, one, two, three, there's going to be four parking spots, of, four existing parking spots that the truck will have, because of the radius, will, um, actually cover. So we elected to, to remove those parking spots, spots just to alleviate concerns of crashing. So they're able to access the loading dock, which is on the left side of the building. They're going to come through this way and then back into the proposed loading dock. So we're, we're able to show that the truck can enter the, the site safely and exit as well. And that's the vehicle analysis exiting the site. So after the truck unloads its goods, it could just kind of pull out and then leave the site. So we were, were able to show that it does work.
So you pull in, pull out, no turning around?
Yeah, pull in, pull out, that's it. Yes.
So it seems a little tight at your left corner, and I wonder if you need to just move that, that curb right there? No, 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 in the back, before you, before you back into the site. So you're coming around right, yeah, right there, right there, yep. Looks a little tight there at that curb. I don't know if you need to.
It is, it's, it's close, but it, it does actually work. We feel it's, it's.
You gotta be perfect. Um, just noting on the monument sign, it's, there's not a dimension from the grade to the bottom, but the sign itself is, correct me if I'm wrong, 26 feet?
26 to the bottom of the last sign, plus another three feet, gives you 29 feet.
Another three feet, 29?
29 feet total.
High, 10 feet long. Our, our, uh, regulation is 16.
Do you know if the other signs are coming down? Yeah, that's the new sign. To my knowledge, we're not removing any other signs.
We're saying in addition to the.
On Kear Street.
Sorry.
On Kear Street, there's another sign.
There's one buried in the top corner of Keer 118.
Is the monument a sign?
There's a sign there now.
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
But Baca mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Now you should be heeding our schedule. Eventually, this component will be removed. Or I have to remove it, it's going to be required.
If you could, just any, I'm being told by, uh, Tom, the cameraman, they can't hear you.
You gotta go to the mic.
He just, I'll represent what he just said. He said that if it needs to be removed, that, that monument sign can be removed.
Do you want to replace it?
At the moment, it says Uncle Desap.
I mean, that's a good sign to have, because it's on the inside, so, I don't know.
Yeah, um, that sign, I, I think it's important, and I think we should keep that sign. So we would like to keep it. I, I think the goal here is to, to modernize that one. This way, we have, uh, two signs on either end, doweling and curved, so.
If, if required to seek a variance, a sign variance from the zoning board, we can apply for that as well.
Well, so I think that the sign that you're proposing, the new one, is actually on the, is it on the Burger King lot?
It's on this triangular sheet.
Right. So since they have a freestanding sign, you'd need a variance to have two freestanding signs on one lot.
Okay.
And then this one is on yours, so it's separate. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I'm seeing that the sign, the sign on this application kind of confuses things a little bit.
But usually you have to decide which side is more important.
Yes.
And I think, I think there's a little grove of trees there that may be in your way of your sign, the proposed sign.
If they want two monument signs, they need a variance?
Two signs on one lot.
There's one sign per property, if you're allowed, Nicole.
You threw property this big?
Well, they're putting, it doesn't matter how big it is. They're putting one, actually on Burger King, they're putting one on their own site, that would be fine.
There's two right next to each other on the.
Burger King has its own sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just the layout there. So they have one sign at Kear Street, and one sign on Burger King property, and they will introduce another sign on Burger King property.
Correct.
So we believe that the Burger King sign is eventually going to come down and be included within the pylon sign that we're proposing.
Burger King on this.
However, for, for purposes of, of trying to move things along here, I, I think perhaps we withdraw our request for, for the pylon sign in this application so that we can handle the other, um, improvements that, that we're seeking site plan approval for, and then, uh, work with, um, the Burger King lot at a later date, uh, uh, as to the sign application, if that makes sense to the board.
I mean, is it, is it that complicated to, to get, so this way you guys just get your approval now?
They're probably going to have to talk to the other tenants to, to come up with what they really want out there.
Gotcha.
I'm sure at the end Burger King is going to want to be.
It seems that the, if Burger King's sign is removed, then we won't need a variance for the second additional sign. However, given the height of the pylon sign and, and the square footage of the signage on that, uh, it, it may require, I think it does require.
You can't represent those now, what's going to happen with their site, so.
Well, I, I believe Burger King is the same owner, the, the land is owned by Oster Yorktown, however, um, you know.
Separate site plan approval.
There's a, as represented by, um, staff, you know, there is a separate site, the plan approval recently for Burger King's, um, improvements to that property.
Just want you to proceed that way.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
So what, what other things are, are different from the last iteration? I think you started out something about the, the new loading dock.
So from the last time we spoke, about a month ago. So when we spoke, that was the beginning of the month. So we updated on the civil drawings, we updated the landscaping locations, uh, on Page 300.
Yeah, got that.
So we spoke about that.
Mm-hmm.
We added the traffic vehicle, excuse me, the vehicle traffic study.
Yep.
That we spoke about. The parking calculations, we added to the cover sheet.
Okay.
Which were, end up losing a few parking spots. And the, the monument sign. So there was a detail that was added to the drawing. So that was the details that were added civilly, and then architecturally, um, we spoke about the, so we updated our architectural first floor plan to coordinate with the civil landscaping. And then, um, architecturally, on the exterior elevations, all the existing masonry walls are going to be, are now being painted. Um, and then additionally, we're painting any exposed utility conduits, and then the rooftop mechanical equipment. We were proposing the decorative screening. And we updated architectural drawings to reflect all of those set items.
Is there anything different with the loading dock, the loading ramp, and the new, I don't know if it's one or two refuse enclosures in the back? Along with the addition of the, of the receiving area?
We didn't make any of those.
It's pretty much the same as what we saw before.
Yes, it's all exactly the same. The only thing was just notating the materials and painting and cleaning that up.
And where are you with your building permit for the interior fit up?
So we have up, submitted updated drawings, and we had placed a note on there, anything pertaining to the loading dock is not being done at this time.
Right, okay. So you, you've applied for the building permit for the interior fit up for TJ Maxx, and some of the demising walls essentially?
Okay, yes.
They put you don't have that permit yet, you're still working under the demo permit? Right?
That's correct.
That's correct, yes.
What's next up?
Uh, well, they'll answer some more questions, right? And your landscaping plan is forthcoming, or if you're going to do it right, on, like, 300 is going to be your landscape plan?
I mean, as of right now, yeah, the landscaping as shown right now.
And that does, does not take into account what Baca's memo said? Their memo leaves.
So their memo regarding the landscaping was, they were asking if we could have additional plantings off the curb, kind of, which I'm assuming was, um, actually, hold on, instead of assuming, I would just like to make one point. On drawing C300, the, the amount of sidewalk is much greater than, uh, our section, the TJ Maxx and the new improved part. So the building is set back, you know, like about seven to eight feet, so it allows an opportunity to, to have more plantings. In our case, we don't have that luxury, so to, to produce additional landscaping would kind of be in the middle of the sidewalk. And it kind of limits, um, the pedestrian walk area. So, you know, as we, we did look at it, um, you know, we were feeling that the way it's proposed now along the, the front here was probably more appropriate. So that's why we didn't add additional landscaping at this time.
And if you consider elongating those planting wells?
You can do some landscaping, you know, low stuff, whatever it is. And it'll, I think it'll give room for the roots of the tree to be a little healthier, or more opportunity to be healthier and mature better.
I certainly understand, you know, adding landscaping in the walkway area, that doesn't always seem to make sense, so.
I know we were just concerned that, you know, if we, if we widen it, now we potentially may be increasing the impervious area, but if it's de minimis and it's not impacting the overall site.
If you widen it.
Because the cutouts, they're, I, I.
Well, if you make them larger, you're taking away.
Yeah, I think you suggested maybe wider, make them longer, so lateral to the road.
Okay.
Just extend it so there's larger planting beds.
Just make them longer.
Okay.
So now they're like squares, triple it.
Perfect.
If you can, or, or, you know, double it, half and half on either side.
Perfect.
It'll, I, I think it'll help the tree be healthier, uh, and you will have some opportunity for other landscaping around the tree, but whatever it is that you.
The, the last point, uh, the architecture in the rear of the building, so just to revisit the mechanical screaming, screening and the extending the rear parapet. So at this time, we don't feel raising that rear parapet up, um, is a, is a viable solution. The, 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 the ask is to have the mechanical screening, and we'll do it and make sure that it's painted to match the facade of the building. And I, I think that's the, the strategy that we're going to put for, put forth, and it'll kind of match what's done.
So you're referring even to, um, a parapet that would be really more or less of a fence and not, you know, a framed out metal soffit railing? Right? Even, even that?
Okay. So I, I, I think the point is to have it localized around each mechanical equipment.
No, I.
I think that is.
No, I, I understand the, the description here.
You've got nine units, based upon what I'm seeing there, nine units you're going to enclose. I think the idea is you could take the linear run of those nine units and maybe install the same material that you're thinking of using, maybe even the same lubed material, I don't know. And I don't think it needs to be that tall. When you're driving by on 118, it's, I mean, you're seeing the rooftop, but it's kind of almost at eye level. It's not like you're way up on top.
Yeah, no, it's, it's close to eye level.
So, I mean, a four or five foot parapet might do it. You'd have to do the ma, you know, you'd have to do the visuals and see.
And you can just sit further back on the roof, you're not at the parapet wall, so it need not be that high.
Right. Are you describing the parapet, or like locally around each mechanical?
No.
Equipment?
That's what you're proposing right now. And we're saying, or at least what I'm saying, is that you could take that same material and create more of like a fence along the top of the building.
At the perimeter of the.
At the perimeter, the backside.
You're saying by the time.
It's not tall.
Yeah, by the time you unfold the squares that you're going to put around it, you're going to have a certain length. So you're not, you're not incurring any additional cost by putting it out there. You may even, according to people's eyes right now, that no one's done a, a, you know, a study on it, you may be able to lower that seven foot fence that you have, which will be a cost savings. And it may turn out to be not really much of an additional construction cost, but done and achieved in a way that is more uniform rather than a collection of boxes.
Understood.
Because we still have a collection of boxes now, they're sheet metal HVAC units, now we're going to have metal lubed horizontal, which I will agree, look better, but nevertheless, it's still going to be this collection of boxes, which doesn't really, you know, doesn't do as much as maybe we think it might do.
Okay, fair point.
So I'm just saying, if you just stretch that linear stuff out and see what the dollar to dollar is, it may, it may be almost a wash.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I mean, you, you can't create a sail. The wind is just going to knock it down, so maybe you need to use the same lubed material, if it's decent enough looking, could be an option.
I'll tell you what, we'll look at it again. I'm just, I know we're concerned about, because of the height of the road, and looking at the building, that if we do in fact put this along the rear of the building, that it's not going to achieve the look that we're, we're suggesting here, so.
Yeah.
We're, we'll look at it, but I'm not sure it'll achieve that.
Maybe a profile from 118 through the building will, will demonstrate, and take the height of the equipment that's on the roof and where it's located, I think. and where it's located, I think you're gonna end up with, call it a parapet improvement. It's gonna be much lower than even the screening you're gonna put around that equipment. But I think the volume of fencing is gonna be much less. I think it's gonna be less costly than more costly.
Okay, we'll look at that. I think it's a valid point, but. So what happens if we get another tenant? And the screening requirements, you know, where if they add more units or they have less units? So just food for thought and we wanna make sure we have a cohesive strategy to make sure we all get what we're looking for. But I'm just, I'm just concerned that we spend the money and put it here, it doesn't get us the look that we're looking for. And I think we'll have a strategy in place for the next time we meet.
Based upon the way the real estate's being kind of carved up now to four different tenants, are you anticipating the mechanicals on the roof to change?
Do I anticipate the mechanical?
I mean, can those units that are there now serve as the separate tenants as you are contemplating?
I would say that they were designed for the original intent. So I know some of the other, depending on the use that goes in, it could very well change, so.
The rooftop units are usually sized for certain volume of air that they handle.
Yeah.
And they're placed because they, you don't get a, you don't get a twenty thousand square foot area handled by one unit. You get several units because of the duplicate compressors and, you know, the efficiency of it. So they're gonna be staggered over the roof anyhow. So probably fairly close to what you have currently. Because that, most of that space was conditioned space when it was formally occupied.
Yes.
I don't think you're gonna get a dramatic change.
It's not gonna be a dramatic change, but, you know, I, we just wanna make sure that there's no surprises in the future. And the strategy's in place to achieve what we're all trying to get here and modernize the building, so.
So it was one big open space?
Yeah, the, yes.
So that's the original intent of the units? Now you're breaking it up into four individual spaces?
Right.
So I don't see how those units work if you're redesigning. Do you have an engineer working on that?
We do.
I would talk to them. Because what you don't wanna do is do it twice, right?
Correct.
So I think it's important to really get the details. Your engineer will be able to tell you that. And then we move forward from there. I think the idea of breaking the signage out is good. I don't know, is this gonna hold up your building permit where you're getting jammed up now? Maybe we include that top part in with the signage if that's possible?
What top?
Can we split the parapet and that whole discussion there so they could find out? You know, because once you start, once these engineers start looking at the units themselves, they might have ten different ideas.
They'll have to get to understanding what the units will, will need to be and where their location is. If there's time left, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have all those, this will all be sorted out.
All right.
In advance of the next meeting. So we don't need to delay, I promise you, we'll be able to solve this.
Okay.
Yep.
Just discussing procedure for a moment. If this does require a public informational hearing and public hearing, would we be able to, if the board is willing to set that for the next meeting?
If it requires it, you can set it. I mean, you know the project.
It's basically a loading dock.
I mean, it's the loading dock and redoing, you know, the facade. So I'm, you know, it is what it is in the, in the regulation, but, but you can set it right now?
Do you think we need it? I don't think we need it.
Yeah, well then that's.
Yeah, I mean. We'd be happy if it was not required.
No. Listen, we're very happy to see these stores going in. With any opportunity where there's change, we try to improve on the situation. And that's what we're trying to do here. But at this point, for what you're doing, I don't think it requires a full blown. No, public.
Public informational?
Right.
Would you wanna do the public hearing at some point or not? You don't think it needs that? I just wanna make sure that you're clear.
I don't think so.
I don't think it needs it.
I don't think it needs it.
I mean, you're basically adding a loading dock.
The site's not changing. Buildings come out for a while.
Great, okay, thank you.
No, I don't, I think more importantly is you work out those details. I think you've heard from a group what we're looking for, right?
Yes.
So also as a group, we're saying we're gonna pull away of those other, right? Regulations or the other hearings that we don't feel is necessary. But we wanna see those improvements made.
Understood.
Yeah, I just want, I want you to address the points that are bottomed in.
Right, okay.
In the next set of plans, so we can close that, those issues out. But they're the overall ones we're talking about. Appearance and layout and things.
Right. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Does the applicant get, any of the correspondence that we get? Does the applicant get access to that or?
Oh, yeah. Right?
Okay. Because again, I think.
Only space?
Yeah, of course. So I think what you'll see is that it's, it's all about the appearance, right? We have an opportunity to say, great, great shopping center, great to see the space get filled. Is it an opportunity to even beautify it more or update it? And that's what everybody would be concerned about.
Yes, absolutely.
Front and back. That's it.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you. Okay. Next, we have a ZBA referral, zero five dash twenty four, Kunha. This is a zoning variance application for seventy eight Summit Street.
Nobody's here?
I guess not. So.
When's the fact on there, the end of the month?
I assume it's on the end of the month. You can ask for more time, you've done it in the past. Do, Robyn, is the lot next to this in common ownership? It is, right? Okay. So.
Am I gonna learn it?
No, they're actually splitting, they're keeping the split.
Yeah, I don't see anything in here which indicates the surrounding lots like you usually get. So I really would like to see that.
So this is a two family house on a substandard lot?
Five thousand square foot lot.
Five or ten?
Five would be a single family.
Is it five or fifteen?
Ten would be a five.
I know. You wouldn't even put a single family.
It's ten dollars. It says right there.
It's.
It says what?
Two family on ten.
I know that, but if the lot, ten thousand square foot lot, you need bigger than that even to put a house on it. And this guy's coming along with two houses on it?
Yeah, that's the question, yeah, absolutely.
And they took the star all the way out. Everything's out to the maximum on this.
Right. Everything's out to the maximum. It looks as though some of the stone walls, and I haven't, you know, spoken to anybody on it. Looks like some of the stone walls that need to be constructed partially on the original lot that they have. The original lot, I'm assuming, is also ten thousand square feet, Robyn? Did we look at that yet?
I don't know.
Okay, so we'll look into that. But essentially, you're getting what should be one, one unit on twenty thou, two, ten thousand, which makes it twenty thousand. Now you're gonna have three. That's, that's the big planning question. Along with, you know, it's, it's a big structure on, on a small lot. But you're adding that space and, you know, there is sections in our, not sections, there's a section in our code that says, if you have a substandard lot, but you're, you have adjacent holdings, you need to merge those together to achieve, to the greatest extent possible, compliance. And then you go forward and do what you need to do. So this is not, that hasn't happened at these two lots.
John brought a question. Does this meet with setbacks that we have? I mean, forty, what, how can it meet the setbacks of such a small lot?
I have to, I have to be honest with you, I haven't looked at the setbacks yet.
That alone would knock it out.
We don't have an individual block plan.
No.
We have a floor plan with no, no batteries, right?
Right.
Before, I would wanna see a site plan.
You got a little site plan on the front. It doesn't have, I don't see that it's giving us a setback.
This one.
Yeah, but it's.
I don't have that.
It doesn't show required versus.
You don't have page eighty of ninety four in your package?
Page eighty of ninety four?
Yes.
Looks different.
Yeah, it's good. That's the plan you're looking at.
Yeah, that's it.
Right.
That's all you got.
This is discussing analysis.
Right, right.
I mean, the only reason they give, the reason they give is that it's not financially feasible for them to go to sell it.
So he put it in with the.
That's their reason.
Yeah, well, that's. He's in. Doing order.
Made a mistake.
Never financially figured that out.
Picking up a Thomas.
That's first I heard that.
Soon it'll start getting changed. There need to be nails in here again.
So on that page, I don't even see it. The right hand corner? That discusses setbacks, I believe. Side yard.
Forty. It, I think they're claiming they have the right setbacks.
Based upon this, they are.
That's a big, big house.
Not bed or gun house. All right, ten thousand square foot.
It's forty, forty by sixty seven is the footprint of the house.
Well, regardless, I think we need them here to tell us exactly.
So you wanna, like a location map with?
Yeah, you know, we've gotten them before. We have different lots all around.
Yeah, we've done maps like this for you?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay. So should we ask the zoning board to pull forward? We don't need it.
No, I think we need.
Is there any precedent in town where a two family house, one on a ten thousand square foot lot?
I would bet that there is, but I don't have.
Particularly in that neighborhood. I mean, you know, new building in that neighborhood.
It is, this is the R two, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, the two families allowed, but it still has the twenty thousand square foot requirement.
So once you say yes to this, you're gonna say yes to this in any place in that neighborhood, basically?
In the R two.
That's a consideration.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanna see what's going on.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so let's see here from the applicant. All right, we'll move on to the last item on the list, which is a town board referral. Peace and good order.
We can retire.
There you go.
Are you retiring already?
Yeah, I'm retiring.
Now I said you can retire in the Caribbean. You're gonna retire again in the second one.
Shrubel. Retire in Shrubel.
That's right, that's right. Nice beach in Shrubel.
Peace and good order. This sound, this looks appealing, what you're doing.
Can I ask a question? Town or your town? So it's clear about the snow. But if there's a sidewalk in disrepair, like there's a crack or it's uneven, is that the burden of the town or the homeowner?
I believe it's the town. Snow removals to whoever's interrupting the property.
Especially if the sidewalk by the town owns the property.
That you're responsible for the snow removal?
No, the town, the town, there's a sidewalk in front of town on property.
Oh, then we do the snow removal.
But if the sidewalk is uneven or.
In the town right of way, we're responsible for maintenance. Physical maintenance.
Okay.
Where did this language come from?
The language for the peace and good order? I believe it was drafted by Adam with recommendation from the town board. But Adam really, I think, drafted this in terms of what it looks like in the past, in our comments.
What's, what's changing though? The definitions of noise disturbance?
Definitions of noise disturbance, the, we're actually setting times, you know, right now on noise wood and it's just kinda like not, not, you know, not really clear.
Yeah, well, the reason why I ask is because we did a lot of research on this actually. And I have a lot of information on it. For not just sound, but for some other things that might.
Yeah, we said decibel levels. I don't think this is the entire law, but there were decibel levels that we set. We did purchase a decibel meter, you know, but, you know, the idea behind this is to, is to just get some more concrete. So it's more enforceable. And not only more enforceable, it's, we could, if somebody has a complaint, we could reference to this and say, all right, listen, our law says, you know, it's between such and such a time and the decibel levels are at, you know, the standard level. You know, it is what it is, you know, that kind of stuff as well. You know, it's kinda like a two way street here. We wanna be able to make sure everything is nice. We wanna make sure people are comfortable. We also wanna mitigate against, you know, just complaints that we get because the law's unclear.
Yes, I completely agree.
Yeah, so.
Well, based upon our experience, as Robin is alluding to, with some other projects where we had sound issues, I have a couple of questions about this. I mean, sound level reading taken at a dwelling. I'm not quite sure whether, you know, that's specific enough for you in terms of defining things.
And at least blowing?
Yeah, a dwelling.
Your, any, your neighbor?
So for example.
If I'm the one being offended by the sound, does the measurement take place on my property or?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's correct. That's where you would measure it, right?
So.
Am I right, Dave? Yeah.
But you are, it is during the day though here too? There's a limit during the day? Fifty-five DVA between seven AM and ten PM?
Yeah.
What's an example of fifty-five DVA? I mean, is this mean all parties end at ten or you can't have parties?
No, fifty, not gonna happen. Fifty-five is like a conversation.
So if I have music playing around my backyard at two o'clock in the afternoon, my neighbor could, I mean, again, I don't know what the decimals are, but if somebody's cranking some music or?
Potentially, yeah, potentially.
What about leaf blower?
That's gonna be up to eighties, nineties, or it can reach a hundred sometimes.
So we're outlawing the use of leaf blowers?
There's a section for noise from construction equipment and that kinda stuff.
Landscape.
There's a separate, there's a separate section for that. And there's a section that deals with, you know, kinda restaurants and stuff like that. Which is more geared toward restaurants and.
But I don't think that's clear here. Noise.
So what's that?
Noise could be a dog barking. It could be a rooster. Right?
What's that? I don't have the law in front of me, I just have the section from.
Here's the laws in your book. This is the regular law. The existing law.
Or is, what section is this replacing?
This section is replacing chapter two one, two sixteen.
Two sixteen, two?
Two one six. It's on page eighty-nine of ninety-four of your book.
That's the original.
That's the original. The new one is four pages down.
No, it's only replacing section two sixteen dash two. All right, I can tell.
Right. I'm sorry, misunderstood your question.
That's good.
What happens with noise from sporting events at schools or any of the other awkward? Does that address specifically to exclude or? I mean, you have a ballgame and everybody yells and a neighbor is nearby, is that, are we changing things to the extent that allow a neighbor to then bring a complaint for an activity that we know is gonna happen and we want to happen?
Well, I mean, yes, I mean, if the noise, if the noise level is above what we're proposing here, sure. I mean, that's the idea. And if the noise level isn't above it, if someone brings a complaint, we could reference here and say, listen, it's not above that. But this is, this is I think.
What I'm saying, does it exempt?
This exempts schools.
No, but I know schools, but ballgames don't, don't happen on school property, is what I'm saying. So does it, does it address some of the other ball fields in town that are not on school property? I guess what I'm concerned.
I mean, I could look. I don't, I'm not, I'm not certain about that specific question right now, but I could get back to you on that. That's really not, not a big deal. Dave, do you have any feedback on that? I mean.
I think as written, this would probably, this would govern those things. There's an exception for school, and I think school events, but it's just like, the question is, is just get together and play and pick a game?
No, I'm saying, but if you go to Downing Park, that's not a school property, right? So somebody who lives in proximity to Downing Park and there's a ballgame going on, I'm just looking to not create a conflict, that's all. If that's, maybe it's addressed, maybe it's not.
You wanna, you want some examples?
I think it should be. I mean, if you're anticipating a ballgame going on in those locations.
Well, this says sixty decibels is a conversation, three feet between people. Seventy is classroom chatter, eighty is a freight train from a hundred feet away. A hundred's a construction site, a hundred and ten is nightclub with music. So that's when you're getting into the really heavy stuff. Fifty is an urban residence, forty is a soft whisper, okay?
Well, with the scale. So from a planning perspective, Robin pointed out, it. So from a planning perspective, Robin pointed out, where, where this really comes up is where, particularly where residential property abuts, there's nearby commercial property, like Nestle, right, the beeping of the trucks in the middle of the night and so forth. Does this law intend to address that?
Well, yeah, I mean, in the middle of the night, the beeping of trucks would, would probably not, you know, on a construction site, you know, would be, you, you can't do it, it sets certain times when the construction can happen.
What about Nestle Waters?
Yeah, I'm still dealing with that one, but, you know, yeah, so, so something like this would, would probably, would guide us more in what we're going to need to do for screening and stuff like that and, and noise mitigation in the future. Now, if these numbers and the, and the decibel levels aren't amenable to what you guys are thinking, some of the, you know, we haven't passed anything yet, so, you know, that's why we referred it out.
Question, can we have some sort of recognition that the planning board can depart from these standards in either direction? In the case of particular approvals that we're working on, if we know there's gonna be a problem with a site, with, with activities going on after those hours, for instance, what do you think? Just think. Yeah, I mean, the Nestle Waters is a great one to look back at.
Yeah.
Right, and say, what is the decibel level of those, the backup beepers for when they're, you know, pulling the trucks?
Oh, we have, we probably have that, that, we probably could get that kinda data because the neighbors are, they probably have that. You know, they probably have the meters and stuff, but, you know, it does have to be decibel levels, anybody could go out and buy a decibel meter, but, you know, it has to be calibrated properly, so, you know, there are a whole bunch of mitigating factors on that. But, yeah, I mean, that would be something that if you guys wanna make a recommendation on it, put it in there. We're definitely looking at this, I have a couple of my own concerns that, that I brought up at a public meeting. One was, you know, the weekends, you know, for, for restaurants and stuff like that. You know, it's, it ends at ten, ten PM, I wanna extend it at least another hour on, on like a Friday and a Saturday. So I wanna split that up, so it's not just the same, the same time Monday, you know, seven days a week, because I think, I think it, it, it's differentiated. So, you know, we definitely wanna, we're definitely looking into that.
Fridays, Saturdays and St. Patrick's Day.
Now, with Nestle Waters, we were able, through very polite conversations with them, to get them to actually change their behavior and their operation times, and that has made a significant difference and impact on the neighbors. We've still got some ground to cover, and John and I have been working on it, and we're getting there, and Nestle has been cooperative to date.
Also, see you exempt municipally sponsored or approved events, so I'm thinking of the street fairs and the stuff that takes place in downtown.
Right.
Which could run pretty late, and it's not that far from residential areas, so I wonder about that. I also came, you know, you have an old definition of sounds from bells or chimes in connection with churches and synagogues.
Right.
I think that really needs to read religious institutions and not limited to those two.
Which is, which would be an easy change, I believe.
I know, it just popped out at me when I was reading this.
Yeah, I believe that's, that's just language.
That's easy, I understand.
Cause I think that's the spirit of it, right, it's not just churches and synagogues, other things.
The main concern for me as a planning board member would be some kind of ability to interact with this law as we may need to. Because we've done those studies like Guiding Eyes, remember? We talked all about the noise from that and how that was gonna be screened and reduced without having these standards. We kinda came, I think we used the same number.
But you're, you're saying you want, you wanna be able to interact and, and alter it on a permanent basis or just during construction?
Well, well.
Just during their build-up, both?
It depends, if an operation like Nestle Waters comes in and says, would we do all this activity in the middle of the night? You know, do we, do we foreclose a business like that from coming in? But, or you say them, okay, we have to limit the sound coming out of your project, out of your operation, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Oh, I think what you would, you would do is you would say, all right, you know what, you need to build some kind of a soundproof barrier that's going to get you to these levels, and that's gonna be part of your site approval. That's, I think, how, how the law would, would.
That's how we'd interact.
Would interact, right, you would say, okay, this is, these are the levels, these are your times. If you're going to be exceeding these levels at these times, then you're gonna have to put up a wall, you're gonna have to put up a sound curtain, a sound barrier.
So that would help.
Yeah, it would help, it would, yeah, it would help.
Okay.
But, put your, put your recommendations in, and, you know, I think, I think you raise a good point.
You have other recommendations? What else, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, we could write our own memo to them.
Okay, all right.
And the information that you said you had, that you did research on, send it over.
When are you expecting, are you putting this on soon?
I'm not exactly sure when we're, we're actually gonna put it on, it's not gonna be on for the next meeting, I don't think.
Okay, so you wanna begin at your next meeting, we can bring the, the research and stuff like that?
Yeah.
And address memo and some of the points that were made?
Right.
You wanna hone in on, hone it down?
Please.
Yeah, good, yeah. I think you need this.
I, I think so too, I think, if the other one's too vague, you know, you know, we get complaints and, and we really have nothing, you know, to kinda like, you know, reference to, you know, so, you know, it frustrates, it frustrates individuals, it frustrates, you know, our residents, and we just try and find a place where we could all, you know.
Yeah, it's a good effort.
It has to, it has to happen, it's about time.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't look in there, who's the enforcement agency?
Who's the enforcement?
Who enforces?
Who enforces?
Code enforcement, that would, that would be who would be enforcing this, building department.
And if it's on a weekend?
That's another, that's another issue, I'm working on, you know, I'm, I'm looming out our sign laws and, you know, one of the, one of my suggestions is, you know, people have to, if you wanna put an A-frame sign out which is approved, you could do that, you know, after five PM or after six PM or after seven, they need to come in, you need to roll them up, right, bring them in, not just leave them out. Problem is, is if they don't bring them in, who's gonna be around to enforce the code that they're not in? So that, that is an issue, but I think, you know, it would still help with many businesses that they'll just, they'll automatically comply and will get these A-frame signs, you bring them in at, at night, you put them out during the day, you don't just leave them out. We have the luxury of leaving these things out, since it was in the Bronx. You wouldn't be leaving anything out, cause they wouldn't be there the next morning, you know, we have that luxury here and so.
Is the problem that we're having?
It's not really a problem, it's just, you know, we're looking at, at the, you know, what, what can we do to improve things? And, and, you know, and, and make, make the town look a little meter, you know, if you're open for business, put your sign out, great, get your customers. You know, that's, that's just something that I'm tossing around in my head, I haven't discussed it with anybody yet. But, you know, that would be something, you know, that, that I think would be a consideration. Sandwich boards, you know, maybe regulating what size, what size A-frame signs, some of them are gigantic, some of them are small, you know. You don't want to totally limit and eliminate them, in my opinion, this is just my opinion. You don't wanna totally eliminate them because I think they're helpful to businesses. So you wanna, you wanna be mindful of the businesses and, and commerce because that's very difficult nowadays for any business, especially somebody with a brick and mortar.
You don't wanna throw, throw it away where?
Definitely not.
And not even seeing the sign because there are too many of them.
That's correct, that's correct, so I think that's, that's kinda like a, a deep reminder, but we'll see what happens.
If we wanna discuss something in the way of enforcement, how about we, we're starting off a meeting, we add that?
Do you want to add it?
Yeah. So we add it.
Right.
Dan, you gotta say?
Try the front chat.
So, it, it just came to our attention that you issued a stop work order to the old nursery?
Yes.
On Route Six? Can you talk about that?
Sure.
You have to get it to the mic.
Come on, Dan.
You know the drill, Tom's already, he was looking at you.
Yeah, I don't want Tom yelling at me. So, we went out there and it's like an area kind of on the west side of the lot. It's, it's almost like a panhandle on the property that I guess previously had not been used. So the, the new owners put up like an eight-foot like fabric fence all around, and based upon my observations into that area, I saw like all hydroxyls. I looked at the DEC maps and that appears to be state-regulated wetlands as well, so I've been in touch with them. So we need them to, to do a flagging based upon our code and the state's code, and I, I guess that's where it really starts from. But as far as we could tell, we were looking at area photos to try and determine whether any tree clearing went on. It did appear, when you look at some of the older photos, there was some tree clearing. Planning looked into it, I guess, I believe there were two variances issued, I believe it was, I think one was back in the seventies, I think, and there was another subsequent one, maybe in the nineties or thereabouts.
Late eighties or nineties.
But, but clearly, you know, the, so, so I, I wrote my violation looking through the prism of the codes that I enforce. Obviously, the, the variances that were issued did not contemplate having pools on telephone poles. You know, it was really supposed to be a garden center, so I think it's a fair statement that that activity is beyond the scope of what the zoning board contemplated when they, they issued the variance for the garden center.
Isn't there a special use permit in effect there?
Well, I think that, that was, I think issued by the zoning board, but again, for a garden center.
Good.
It was a, it was a, basically, it's a single-family residential zone, and they were doing what the ZVA determined was a farm use. So that's how it was approved, so a nursery is, is in that genre. And the last one that they got in the late eighties, early nineties was to erect greenhouses, one or two greenhouses.
And.
Now, they're screwed.
And you're not owning anything.
Correct, and they're, they're, they're not allowed to bring people into the greenhouses completely to produce whatever they produce, and then you sell it in the small residential, small retail area that they have.
It's my understanding is they bring in all of their stock, they don't grow anything on site?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's no longer an agricultural or?
Well, I mean, I, the prior owner, I mean, I think he, you know, in the last decade materials, he sold, I think, the same deal as in.
Well, he did grow some, I knew him pretty well, he did grow some things there, but, and did bring stock in. This guy bringing in, he brought in everything, growing up, and he has three, three greenhouses, I think. And the fencing that we were talking about that I saw goes out on that panhandle, but it also then goes along the property line all the way up to whatever that back road is, it comes from the stone church around.
It's all.
Gold DC.
It goes all the way, it goes all the way back here, and that fence is eight feet high.
Yeah, I, you know, again.
So, my question is.
I'm speaking for what I did that, that was a zoning matter.
Right, so, so my question is, is, who addresses the issue of those swimming pools being there? And the use of the site and the use of the intrusion into none of the wetlands, but it's probably in the control area? And from my observation, it looks like he's onto the property and facing Route Six, well beyond his property.
So. Say, I, I issued a stop work order based upon the sections of the code that I enforce.
Right, so you stopped the work that was going on, but he's still continuing to operate the property as he chooses to.
Correct.
So I'm just asking, where do we go from here as a town? Does this board have an action to take or not take? Cause we had talked about visiting other sites that we've approved in the past to see if they're complying with our prior approvals and so forth. This one goes way back, but this new owner is obviously just doing whatever he, I think his comment to you was he was gonna do whatever he wanted to do. That was.
No, he didn't say, he didn't say that to me.
Well, I mean, his attitude is.
I don't think so, maybe that's.
His attitude is.
Yes, but he, he, he didn't say the quiet part out loud, if that's what you're asking.
No, but I'm.
I don't think so, I think he's been, he, he has been, some of the issues have been addressed and there have been conversations with them and, and I think they are, you know, cooperating, and we just gotta get it, you know, straightened out. But we've had Dan there, I think you guys were there, I believe building has been there, so it's not like it's, I just don't wanna make it sound like nobody's doing anything or just allowing this guy to do whatever he wants, that's not the case.
I mean, I, I mean, it would appear that to legalize what's going on, he's gonna need a local wetlands permit, a state wetlands permit, and go back to the ZVA to have them consider, you know, what he's doing, whether it's, was it, you know, or, or modify it. Cause as far, you know, in my opinion, what's going on there isn't consistent with the zoning board approved.
Right, but my, my question is very specific, is what, what action does this board take or not take? Cause I didn't know with that special use permit, who, who granted that or what review was done?
The ZVA.
Okay, so they would have to go back, the, the owner of the property would have to go back to the ZVA?
Yeah, if I'm mistaken, John, I think, I think the ZVA referred it to the planning board, I think the last go.
I think they required a site plan that was never done, if I remember.
That's possible.
The approval required them to do a site plan that they never did.
We haven't.
The previous owner?
Yeah, right then.
Yeah, so that would be in the late eighties, early nineties, we don't have that site plan. Did we check the minutes or anything during that time?
I don't know.
We should, we should probably do that, but we don't have a site plan. We did see them come in when I was around, so that's late nineties, but nothing really ever came of it. He was wanting to expand something or other, it just didn't, wasn't working out, so.
Who enforces a special use permit that's issued by the zoning board? Or make sure there's compliance?
I think it would be the code enforcement officer because zoning board is connected to the zoning code, which is connected to the, to the building department, so I think he would, he would be the one to do it. Although Dan does have some enforcement capacity in terms of site plans and, in particular, with respect to landscaping plans. And obviously your board does, but I think, you know, pursuant mostly to the things that you do. I don't know that you have it in this case, I, I just don't know that you mentioned to that really.
Yeah, I guess part of the problem, it appears there is no site plan that the plan, planning board approved.
Yeah, we have got it.
Okay.
I just got one, one more thing, I forgot to put on the record, the reason I recuse myself on the Tully sandbars is because my firm got hired by Tully to finish the easement, so I wanna put that out, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next meeting, this is the only meeting this month, is May sixth, and that's back at the town hall. So motion close the meeting?
Motion.
Second. Hold the table.
Second.